I talked to her. She didn't get back. I stopped in there yesterday when I was alone. Since I got there, I were really.
So what was the normal day?
Okay, so that's very deep. And let's do the play to late.
I'm going to leave you two seconds. United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation of honor God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we need to approve the mix of the August 19th, 2025 regular course of D and the September 10th, 2025 question D.
I'll move to prove this presented.
One second.
Any discussion?
It's good enough for Dan, it's good enough for me.
Very much. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, supervisor remarks, don't have a whole lot, actually. I did, we did get the soil boring results back. I didn't send my email to Ted, but I'm talking about the fire station. So I'm gonna do that and give them T and M's like estimate or whatever, just so you can tell us what do you think. Also, in the US expertise, you know, what do you think too? All right, yeah, that's about it. Okay, approved the agenda. We need to amend mint, so.
Well, that's not.
Well, I just had amend action, adding action item banks of signers.
Yes.
So if we would like to.
Ten I.
Ten I, okay.
What is?
I would move to amend the agenda to include under action items, consideration of the bank policy change.
And signers.
Oh, no, no, you're gonna take that home. Talk about that.
Okay.
Okay. Any discussion? Don't have any other moving around, but, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Call to public.
Three minutes to say whatever you want.
How wonderful the roads are. Okay. The comments are important. So in front of you is something, I'll just, I probably should have said in supervisor remarks, but there is a legal opinion for your take home. It is confidential, so we will talk about it a little later in another meeting, but so when you're done, throw it, burn it, bring it here. Just pretty self explanatory, anyway. Okay. Anybody else? On that one? Treasurer report.
Good evening. So if you refer to the revenue expenditure summary for the general fund, we're forty-two percent into the fiscal year and excluding the 200,000 that we transferred out to the capital improvement fund, we are forty-two percent into our budget and expenses, so we're precisely on track with the budget as amended. Regarding the revenues, revenues is always funny for a time shift because we get state shared revenue and other sources throughout the year, but millage money is collected basically during the last three months. I mention that because the administration fee that we collect is also collected during the last three months. So we're ahead on revenue as far as budget, and I expect us to be even more ahead by the end of the year unless something dramatic changes. So despite the fact that there are potential government shutdowns at both the federal and state level within as much as the next couple of weeks, Webster's financial position remains strong. And I want to reinforce to this board that if we continued our typical spending as we have done in the last few years, our revenue could literally go to zero and we could continue normal operations for up to three years. The ability to pay summer taxes to Webster without interest, interest ended yesterday, and right now we have roughly six percent of the levying taxes has gone delinquent. And I think that's all I want to highlight for my remarks. If there's any questions or comments or advice regarding the elements of the treasurer's report, please share them now.
Dan?
I always go first, by all means.
So John questioned at our last meeting, you said twenty-something percent of tax still outstanding, so it's influx last.
The last week has been hell, and I deeply appreciate the work that Amanda and Linda did. And I came in on Saturday and processed the payments that came in on Friday and Saturday, and then Monday morning we had another giant stack. So it was, it was the most last minute behavior that I've ever seen since I've been treasurer.
So it's six percent, that's higher than prior year?
I would say that's higher than typical, but not probably statistically significantly higher. It's in the, it's in the neighborhood. Yeah, it's higher than usual, but not noteworthy.
Okay, thank you. And then for state revenue sharing, we certainly anticipate or expect next year, but are you thinking this year we're going to be impacted by lower revenue sharing from state?
My crystal ball is not any better than anyone else's. I would fully expect that the statutory, statutory revenue sharing will go away. That just started this year, and it roughly comes in at about a thousand dollars a month, so we're talking about twelve thousand dollars that I, I am fully expecting to go away completely. The constitutional revenue sharing is based on our share of the Michigan sales tax, and that could be impacted if, for example, the new budget that I think will eventually be signed by the governor may be, sales tax on gasoline might no longer be part of that sales tax that they count for constitutional revenue sharing, it might go of all the roads. I don't know, nobody knows. If all of that went away, Tony and I estimated that that would be a reduction of about nine percent of our constitutional revenue sharing. Which would not be a horrendous burden to bear for the remainder of this fiscal year, but it would definitely be something that we would factor in when we make our budget for the next fiscal year.
Thank you. So nine percent would be like eighty thousand?
About seventy-five, eighty thousand dollars, that's correct.
I'd like to follow up on some of the discussions we had last time in the email we also sent relative to the public safety fund. When I was making comments, I've heard in the past that John in fact concerns about fiscal viability longer term in the current context for the public safety fund.
Yeah, because of the fact that it's a ten-year millage and because of the fact that the cost increases are extremely difficult to predict, the three municipalities that participate in the fire department, which is the biggest portion of our public safety cost, we set the spending plan, so this December, we will set the spending plan for the fire department for next calendar year. Most of the time we have set the spending plan at or near what the chief requests, but in the last couple of years, we have set the spending plan significantly less than what the chief has requested. It'll, it'll be interesting to see at the December Fire Board meeting how that plays out. I, I, my personal belief is that there will be more of an appetite to tighten the spending plan than usual, but I don't know.
So back in our March budget planning, there was a spreadsheet that was circulated to the board, where we had a total estimated revenue of 1.5, call it just under 1.6 million, and we were predicting expenditure of just under 1.8 million, leaving us nominally deficit spending on the order of 200,000. And so we have a budget now of 2.16, excuse the balance of 2.16 in the public safety fund. Of that 1.7 billion, just under 1.8, that we're anticipating spending, how much have we spent?
We spent about a hundred thousand dollars a month.
How, so, so you gave us balances at what, the end of our fiscal year, which was March of each calendar year, and we had a balance at the end of 2024 of 1.6 million. So I would project, based on some of the work I was doing here, that our balance come March should be 1.4 million? Whatever.
That, that sounds low to me, but according to the auditor's report, our public safety fund balance was about 2.7 million, according to this graph.
Yeah, that's in December, right?
This was at March 31 of this year.
I thought so.
Your audit report is for the fiscal year.
So, all right, so how did I get to, why was that, why was the spreadsheet circulated showing March and last year being 1.6?
The, the data that I provided previously was to give the board an understanding of the low watermark. The balance at the end of March is the high watermark, because remember, we collect all of our revenue in those three months.
All right, so on the low watermark, what do you anticipate then? So if you're at 2.7 and we have 1.7 to generate, what do you expect the low, the low watermark to be?
It's in the revenue and expenditures report, I can look it up.
And the, the low watermark occurs when?
December, I'm sorry, November 30th, because we start collecting the millage on December 1.
All right, okay.
I'm sorry, you need to look this up.
Well, the concern is if 1.6 is accurate, and we're going to deficit spend this year for 200, and for 1.4, we have seven years to deficit spend at the current millage rate before we've exhausted all the funding.
But every three months of the, every last three months of the fiscal year, the balance goes up by the full collection in three months.
But eventually it does spend it back down.
Over the next 12 months.
Right. So my concern is I'm not interested in going negative at the end, and we can move that, that covers the points I was interested in, we can bring this back up, we have an agenda here for this. The concern is, will we go negative at any point in that balance if we stay on the current fiscal plan we're on?
So I know the chief wants to add headcount. I can speculate what my fellow board members want to do, but I'm pretty sure they don't want to add headcount, at least not at the rate he would want to add it. The biggest increase in our public safety spending over the last couple of years has been increased staffing. So now we've gotten to staff up to two firefighters per station, 24 hours, seven days a week. In my personal opinion, we've gotten to where we need to be to protect this community. Others might say we need four per station, 24 hours, seven days a week. That's the deliberation that we'll have in November and December at the Fire Board.
All right, we can follow up on this, because the, the expense sheet you gave us back in the March clearly said 331, and the 2.7 doesn't match any of that.
Well, I, I would simply refer you to the auditor's report, which shows that we've increased our public safety balance every year for the last eight years.
Now I would refer you to your spreadsheet, which doesn't follow. Tony, you see the discrepancy here?
I think that you're talking past each other. John is giving you figures that talk to how low the balance can possibly get, and you're talking about total collections over the course of, of an entire year. That's what I'm hearing. I'm not sure if that's what either of you, you know, you're, you're saying one thing, Brent, Brent's saying something else, that's why nothing, nothing matches.
It, it, I fully expect that we'll have to make adjustments during the course of the 10 years, but I don't expect to have to make any adjustments for five years. I mean, when we had the public safety millage that was definitely going to zero, we had to ask the voters to approve a new millage in the middle of a five-year millage. We're in a far better situation than we've ever been before, and I see, I see no need to ask for more money personally.
Can I ask a question? I don't want to put it on the spot, because literally I just thought about it, but so if the sheriff's billing, because that comes out of it too, right? So if the sheriff's billing us differently, do you know if we're spending less?
It seems like we're spending less, but we only have like two data points.
Okay.
Probably three, and yes, we are spending less because in the past, they would, they would charge us basically a fixed amount every month, and now they're charging us the, and then at the end of the year, they would give us a refund, which usually amounted to about a month's worth of charges. So yes, we are, we're probably spending the same amount, but it's different, it's, it's distributed.
It's being different, it is, we used to take the same amount every month, but now it'd be a different amount.
Correct.
I know that, yeah.
Based on how many deputies are available and where they are and so on.
So, any more questions on the treasurer's report?
No, I can't, so I, you gave us this data back in March, John, and you're, you're right, you quoted as November 30th of each year, and the balance of November 30th of this past year has been 1.6. So if we truly are collecting 1.6 and spending 1.8, that 1.6 has to go down.
Well, what will go down, Brent, I'm sorry. What will go down is the fund balance, because we're not allowed to deficit spend, so, and, and when the state legislature talks about deficit spending, they mean how much money we plan to take in, plus whatever we have in the bank.
Yeah, I understand that, so this is, this is all denoted correctly, it says balance as of, for example, November 30th, 2024 was 1.663 million. So if we get to suspend this year to 200,000, I'd expect that number to be 1.4, so it's a change.
Well, roughly, yeah, I can see what you're, but I, I don't have the figures on hand. I know that John gave us the cash summary by fund, we have a public safety cash in the bank at 2.167 million.
With an expenditure in the order of 1.8 that we don't have documented. So if this is right, like he has here.
But now, now we're talking about two different things, Brent. We're talking about what the cash in the bank is, which is basically a balance sheet at this point in time, and you're talking about an income statement, how much revenue we plan to come in, have come in, which is a long span projection.
No, no, this is, it says account balance.
No, we're, we're, our budget of public safety is to collect 1.5 million between December 1 and February 28. 1.5 million.
And if we're going to be spending, like the 1.8 million, we, our balance, our cash in the bank will go down 300,000. So instead of 2.167, we'll have what, 18 roughly, 1.8 million? And that will continue along.
It should go down.
Yes.
It should go down.
Until, until we raise, or somebody raises the millage that is collected.
At the end of the 10 years, we're not supposed to have really.
Fair enough, okay.
Built the bank, we're supposed to have paid for public service, public safety.
Okay, fair enough, I'm there, no, so I should use the 2.5.
So can I, can I motion to accept the treasurer's report and pay the bill?
I would move to accept the treasurer's report and pay the bills, as well as those anticipated bills received before our next meeting scheduled for October 21st, 2025.
Support.
Any other discussion on that? Okay, we're all called.
Aye.
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 All right, consent agenda report. Heard anything about pulling any of them out. We did get the sheriff's report, what was it, yesterday? I'll forward it. They're a little, still, still a little behind. The lieutenant was in like training or something too, so. Well, if there's not any questions, we can. Let's get the captain.
I just had one comment. Player data was forwarded after it was received on the same day, so I thought it would be an impact. I'll make motion to approve and receive file of consent items.
Okay. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. On the poll? Okay. All right, so now, John, do you want to, we'll start with what you found today? Because this is, yeah, because basically kind of, kind of color what we're doing.
So I took the information that was compiled and, and put in our packet regarding our funding priorities, and basically what I did was I, I stripped out all the names and I created categories to, to capture all of the categories that the seven of us indicated were our spending priorities. And then that resulted in eight categories. I did roughly half of the categorization on my own, and then I recruited Supervisor D'Angelo to help me with the remainder of the categorization. Given the fact that there's seven of us on the board, there can't be any more than seven votes for a particular item, which I thought wasn't clear in the original document. And then I, I organized the columns of the summary data from most popular to least popular based on the number of, of us that voted for each of these categories. I, 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 I did this for myself at first, just to help me understand what I thought our collective priorities were, and then I thought, you know, maybe you guys would benefit from seeing this yourself.
And then the other thing about the vote in March, did you want to talk about that first too? Wait till, about the fact that we already approved the mill?
Oh, that one?
No, we can talk about that when we do.
Okay, we'll get to that.
29.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I, I did put a question mark at the top of every column next to the word cost estimate, because I think ultimately when we are making hard decisions, we need to make it in the context of understanding what the relative costs are. So I'm sure that Mr. Harms can give us a perfectly accurate culvert cost.
We might get more attention building cost, is that true?
All right, decimal points at 500,000 become a culvert.
So for culverts, so because, and I'm sorry, if, how many do we have to do? Three or two? Like there's a one big one, but then there's one we were, we were supposed to do that we didn't get, and there's another one, or is only two?
They gave us a map and they rated the ones, and it was a short list of threes and fours.
And the one they were supposed to board down.
Joy.
Joy.
And it ticks me off, they should have done that year before last.
So that one's going to be a culvert replacement, the culvert replacement on Walsh is going to be a bridge, probably.
So how much does a cul, the culvert replacement going to cost? Not the bridge one?
Question for them.
Okay, I want to.
Less than, less than 50.
I was thinking that was like in the 80,000 dollar range.
Oh.
Yeah, I talked to Adam, I have trouble getting in touch with Adam on a regular basis. So the Vicky is Arms Creek, we had the leftover one on Joy. The one corrugated pipe that's remaining is just south of North Territorial on Z. Hard to find, it's there, but that should be something small corrugated pipe, seems like it should be under 100K as a test area. But we can, we're trying to organize a standing meeting in the hall with the road commission every year for these types of things. Okay, but we've been unsuccessful this year so far. Okay.
So we're talking about 700,000, if it's 500, our share is about 500 for the bridge culvert, whatever that is, and we've got about 80 outstanding then for the Joy Road, because I thought that one was more. And then we have another 100,000 for the territory, one on Z even territorial.
Yeah, the timing on that one is not as urgent. We've been told that the one on Arms Creek does not look good, and like could be like this year, next year.
I thought in the documents of, you're talking Walsh Road, yeah?
No, Walsh on that one, it's rated like.
Walsh is the big dollar one.
Yes. Arms Creek.
It said three to five years, didn't it?
Originally, then, yeah, I've got two phone calls in the last six months, especially when they were just out there, is that you should raise that up, and I couldn't, you talked to them too.
I talked to them too, but I didn't get, I didn't, they didn't raise the arm.
Adam did, because I was trying to figure out where all these culverts were, just asking how many do we have and where are they, and then it came up in that context.
And then the Joy Road one is large, and it's maybe six foot?
That's not my understanding that it's that big.
You know, I've walked onto it, it's four or five. It's not small, but it's not.
Oh, you said Joy Road?
Joy.
Yeah, I have, yeah.
Joy, Joy is four or five.
It's about 60 inches, I would say.
Yeah.
Why is that?
They flagged it, they were ready to go, and then, and they, they even published, we're going to do it, and then they published, oh, we're not going to do it.
Might have been a permitting delay from DDQ.
Yeah, they would have had, you could still get a permit at DDQ.
Okay.
Two years.
I could have touched it by already here, I had some comments last time, I'm not going to go on one more minute here. And so what we originally talked about, I think Tony and Dan, when I, we first started looking at this, when, back in December, January?
Yeah.
We weren't clear on how much we had to spend, and it's concerned it might even have to be additional in the 10-year aggregate past what we're collecting in the millage. In the 10-year aggregate, we're going to collect nominally 5.5 million over 10 years. Since we've, all the work we've done, we don't need all that. So what we have found, if you pull some of the expensive maintenance forward a year or two, you could save some money. But for, and the original work is that we do it every 10 years, what we've been planning on is doing it every seven and a half, so in 10 years we can cover 60 miles. So if you do it towards, call it Dan's original plan, where we don't add anything additional on any given year, over 60 miles and spend. So if you do it towards, call it Dan's original plan, where we don't add anything additional in any given year, over for 60 miles, you'd spend 4.8 million. So it's a $700,000 savings in total over the 10-year aggregate, which will give you some flexibility in the years like the last three. But if you pull it forward by roughly 100K a year for the first couple of years, you can only, you'll spend only 4.6 million. So there's an additional $200,000 in savings. And that's still in the cash flow analysis. Jeff asked me to do is if I were investing the money, what that looked like. So that's, and given that, so Tony, your point, how much we're really spending this year, if we budget an extra 100,000, almost expecting that that might crash to zero because they're always overestimating what the costs are, what the start. So that's the extent of that there, we've done a huge amount of work, if you want to see more, I have spreadsheets and PowerPoint.
Yeah, it does seem like for, at least for the roads. We're kind of at the mercy of hitting a bill, let's see where we are.
John, I gotta tell you, their performance every year is that they always estimate how I come in lower.
Right.
Almost by 10%.
Which is great.
Yeah, so if we estimate, I think the collective roads committee, you know, it seems like they're heading for a amount where if we supplement towards 100 based on upfront numbers, that 100 actually might be zero. So we'll know more after we hit that number.
Yeah, I I contacted the Miller Tiffany, whatever, and she said that Adam was supposed to talk to apparently one of you three about the difference in what they're charging, what our estimate was versus what our bill is coming out to and would we want to have additional projects done instead of not paying a bill? So I, she did not get back to me.
Yeah, so the backstory of that is we originally had an error in Strawberry Lake Road question, it was mislabeled the mileage. So they put three inches down as opposed to six inches of limestone. When I talked to Adam, he said, why don't we see where we get to at the end of all this? And if we have extra, we can just add the extra, whatever, a couple inches possibly on the original budget for no extra costs. And I have a line item, we have a line item for next year for an additional 60,000 planning wise for Strawberry Lake in the event they tell us we don't have any money.
So that's what she was talking about then?
Yeah.
She could have just said that.
She wanted to say it. I I would like to add with this, I didn't have mold mitigation on my list because for me that's something that just has to be done.
And I think that kind of, that kind of got into the, because I was, well, tonight we'll talk about it some more too, but.
Sure.
It's like the how, because one, you know, the one way it's going to cost a lot more than the other, like as far as if we replace windows versus if we.
I felt the same way as Jeff, both on mold mitigation and building maintenance in general, I would prefer to you all as opposites, that's fine.
And then the one, so, okay, so I guess my question for you guys is, so we we can talk about some of, we we have some of the numbers, like, you know. And I know that Sri is going to talk to us about the parks and from what I remember, you can correct me. So if we decide we, if we get, if we decide to go for the grant application in February and we actually get 400,000 dollars, we'd be putting in 100, right? So that would be that, that amount of money, like that would be the most on the park, so.
And the stuff that's not included.
Yeah, well, in the meeting we had to be.
There's other costs that that aren't covered by the grant that they would have to pay.
Okay. So obviously like the big thing is still the renovation.
I really wish the public would weigh in a little more heavily on whether they truly want that park or not. Instead of 30 or 40 people returning the surveys, out of, we have 6,000, well, not quite 6,000 voters in our township and we got a few hundred responses.
What is the population?
33 people.
Well, that, yes, that's the number of people who actually attended the open house.
So you were making a projection on 33 people?
Exactly, exactly.
33 extrapolated to 6,500.
We have 6,000 voters, there's 6,000 residents.
We have on not quite.
6,500 residents.
Yeah, we have not quite 6,000 voters, we purged the rolls and dropped a number of people.
Okay, so priority wise, when I tried to think about how this will work out for us. I mean, I'm anticipating we'll have a lot more discussions when we do more budget, you know, for next year for real. And but I wanted to bring it together, at least what we had, to discuss the millage collection part, right? So that was my, what we think we're going to spend this year, what we, you know, what would happen, and then, so. I don't think there's an actual action item for the funding priorities, but we certainly have to adopt the L 4029. And then we ran into, well, John found, I should have known, but.
We moved into.
Yeah, I think we're going to move, because it's all, it's still all related and thank you for the spreadsheet too, because that's totally all the logic. So I hope we're on the other side.
And I mean, for the things like culverts. I I did not vote for culverts, but culverts are definitely important to me, but that's not this year's spending. That's next year and the year after and the year after, right?
Well, it's.
Whenever if it fails or. Well, no, because we had the culvert fail on on Walsh Road and the result was the road was closed for more than a year.
I think, my thinking is, we're talking long term about both revenue and expenditures from a financial planning perspective. And we have four or five big items that, depending on how we plan, and we can decide what in that 10-year span, where they want to run them and then make decisions about revenue, you know, like a millage schedule.
That that would be my preference, but apparently tonight we just need to tackle this 4029.
I'm always commenting on John's comment, whereas you think tonight.
I I think that that before our next budget session, before we set a budget for next year 26, 27, we need to have some five-year, at least five-year projections, we need to figure out what our priorities are. And we have a good idea now, some of these things will come to pass before then, perhaps the culvert will be next week, we don't know. But then other things are bound to come up, like like the fire department, the fire halls, parking lot or boat or whatever it is, just sort of came out of nowhere and slapped us in the face at about 100,000.
Yeah.
Roughly. So, you know, those kind of things.
No, I agree with you, I think that's just the response of John's comment of, it's not, culvert's not necessarily a issue, it's a big item that we should look at.
I think we just lose because we can't plan for it as well, well, if we don't want to grow. Okay, so, okay, John, so.
You want to make a motion?
A motion? Yeah.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the draft as presented for the L 4029.
And this is what we base this year's budget on?
Yeah, correct.
Correct, okay. I'll second that.
Okay, discussion.
So for, I would like, if I may.
Yep.
Yeah, so what what Tony just alluded to is I pulled the meeting minutes from our March budget meeting that we had this year. And the adopting of the budget was moved by Brand seconded by Shelley based on 2.6000 mils for public safety, 0.4735 mils for PDR and 0.8225 mils for roads. And that motion passed unanimously. So that was what our budget is based on, and that's when you, when you receive the revenue and expenditures report every month, it's based on those millages even though we won't start collecting them until December 1.
Mike, I have a comment that I think that these specific millage amounts need to be included in the motion rather than just moving the L 4029.
So you wanted to read the. They are in fact the millage rates that I just read.
Is that the speed law requirement, Dan?
I'm sorry?
Is that the speed law requirement?
You know what, that's right, because this is the heavily reduced numbers.
Okay, go ahead.
Let me pull the. Pull the forms in the packet. What page is it in the packet?
99.
99.
I've got it here, as soon as I get to 99. I'm on to page 77, 83. So I'll amend my motion to say I would move to adopt the draft as presented, which means to levy 0 mils for operating, 2.6000 mils for public safety, 0.4712 mils for PDR, which is land preservation, and 0.8186 mils for roads.
I would second that. I already did.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome, Dan.
Yeah, so on the PDR topic, there's, Tony, can I make that correction that I spreadsheet we've been working on? So the right balance should have been at November of 2024, the PDR, or excuse me, public safety balance was just under 2.5 million. And if the fire safety, that grows at 3% and we say the 3% growth on taxable value, it will land 2,034 roughly 500,000 in the account. So it's deficit spend at every 200,000 a year, so that math generally works. So it's back to your point, John, if that sort of gets steeper for whatever reason, fire goes up faster, the tax provider's not keeping up. Right now, this assumes they're both in balance, that is the time, that will be the time that they correct.
So my current forecast is based on taxable value going up 4.3% per year. And that's based on our historical experience.
So that's then the target for fire, when you talk to them, if you keep it under 4.3, the budget balance is at 2.6 mils. If fire goes up, or public safety and fire go up faster than 4.3, then adjustment, mill adjustment.
And I think it will several years from now.
Okay.
Yeah, 2,031 is one just stops, right?
It goes to 31, right?
Yeah, it's on this form.
If you, if you look at the form, we have, we are authorized by the voters to levy up to 3.2625.
Right.
And the difference dollar wise between 2.6 mils and 3.26 mils is a lot of dollars.
It is roughly 500,000.
Yeah, it's a lot of dollars, so that's available to us in the event we need it. We have, we we are in the enviable position of having that safety level.
So I have a couple things for me, I'll do it. But first of all, because I'm extremely conservative and I'm worried about the culver thing over my head, I just wanted to like note that given what we have, if we decide to do the building and we have to do culverts, we're going to do a very big drawdown of our general fund. That said though, we can, I I'm not, I still, I agree with not collecting the operating millage, I know it's a couple of year for people. And I think we're going to be okay, and we've already talked about spending the fund balance down. And Tony brought up very succinctly, we will have to, we should establish a floor that all of us agree on and a ceiling and everything, but for this particular year, I I think that that's fine, we, again, I'm really pessimistic. The public safety one, I was kind of, one of the things I'm going to ask the fire department is if they try to figure out other ways, is to figure out, I'm really kind of attached to this. I'd like to see if we can get some fire hydrants or, you know, the dry hydrants. And once we get some of those numbers, we can figure out how many or what we want to do, and I'm sure that will impact the public safety too. So, but I'm also fine with John's motion for public safety. All right.
The last comment, so the element in the room, y'all, is what the floor is that Tony's getting at. You know, right now, between the general fund and capital, we're a little over 4 million. You see estimates out there as to what's your tolerance relative to our budget, our budget's 1.5, call it 1.4. And you'll you'll get guidance depending on who you talk to, there's some multiple of that, is what we should have in those two funds. One with size seems 1X, one with a 2X, I don't see a lot of them that 3, 4X area.
My opinion, for our community, it should be around 1.5X.
Yeah, so I bet you it's somewhere between 2, 3, 2 and a half, 3.
And I have to admit, when the library just started collecting money, I was a little. Didn't get anything up here.
Yeah, so it's 2.1, it feels about right.
Okay, so any more discussion? Okay, roll call though.
Aye.
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 Okay, auditor contract.
Yeah, so we have. So I received an email, it's in your packet. Interestingly, this is the first time, I think probably, I don't think it's an exaggeration, say maybe even for 20 years, that our auditor has requested a price increase. I'm surprised they didn't do it the last 10 years in a row. They're very competitive based on my experience reviewing audit proposals for the other two entities where I am treasurer. And so my recommendation is that we accept this extension of contract. I would highlight the fact that this contract can be terminated with 90 days notice. So even though it's a three-year agreement, it's easy enough to get out of if we wanted to. I don't know, Tony, do you have any comments about?
About the pricing?
About any of it?
No, I I don't have any comments about the pricing, I would go ahead and support you in in adopting or accepting this contract. My only concern is that we have been with this audit company that many years.
A long time.
A long time. And I I think five to seven years is the maximum that's recommended to be with any one firm. I I would recommend that we start looking down for another firm. And it has nothing to do with the quality of their work, it's just.
Practice.
Yeah.
It's just good practice. So I was elected to this board for the first time in 2016. In the very first audit that they gave, John Pfeffer stood there and I asked him directly, you know, you've been our auditor for so long, how long should we have an auditor before we go out for bids? He didn't really like that question.
Sure he didn't.
But I have come to trust them. But I have come to trust them, and they have, uh, they have applied their best people when they do their audits of our firm, I think. I didn't feel that way at first. So I do feel like we're getting quality reviews, and they don't review the same thing every year. So they are mixing it up. I can tell you that the audit that we're going through right now at the senior center is incredibly intense. There's a team of three people that, I mean, they literally are reviewing everything, like, show me your contract through your copier. It's quite, and I actually feel like that's, you know, they're reviewing things that seem almost silly to me, but, um, anyway, I would make a motion that we authorize, so in the past, I've signed the, but I'm gonna make the motion to authorize Mike D'Angelo to sign this extension as presented.
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
Did Pfeffer answer the question?
He danced. He danced.
He did give you a number? He did not give you a number?
No.
John, what is the current rate?
We've, we've been paying nine thousand eight hundred dollars a year since long before I joined the board.
So it's going from ninety-eight hundred to twelve thousand?
Yeah. These numbers are not out of line. I've looked at several competitive bids recently for other organizations. These numbers are in the, they're in the ballpark of what the numbers are for a review or normal audit.
I think we're fortunate we haven't seen an increase until now.
We, we, we've been getting by without, you know.
Any other discussion? Okay. Roll call, though.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
All right, let's... Now comes the fun part. So in the packet are the two, or four bids. I think, hopefully, all you got, we, we got copies for everyone, and hopefully you could see all of them in the room or wherever, but, um, so...
I think I only got two of them in my packet.
Oh, that's only...
Oh, these two. Yeah, so there's only two in here. So these are the two.
We have four.
We have four. So the other two were, um, so these, you can tell, these are like really close with four-twenty-eight-ish and four-twenty-nine. The other ones were four-ninety-five, four-ninety-two. So I thought we would start with this. And...
I'm a little confused because this is in the category of action items. Are, are we thinking we're gonna take action tonight? Because I haven't even seen the other two bids.
Well, we've had them for, because we all have them. Well, you don't have, huh? Whoop, whoop, we have a copy.
Are the other two bids from more local...
Something like that. One of the other two is, um, I can't remember the name. Whoever did the fire hall?
Phoenix.
Phoenix. The other one is O'Neill. So I think O'Neill's...
The library.
Yeah, who did the library. I think O'Neill's like four-ninety-two, the other one's four-ninety-five. They all say that, I mean, partly, I do understand, I mean, we did have them here. Phoenix gave us a one line, like, it, there was nothing in it. There was like a huge packet of...
Okay, and O'Neill?
And O'Neill gave us, you know, a normal bid like these two with actual some details. They're all the same, though, so that's why we have, well, Ken, you know, you guys are here, and I think both of them, both, for both companies, we're supposed to come, so we could ask questions. We certainly don't have to approve it this evening.
I wish, I wish we would because, you know, seventy-five thousand dollars is a lot of money for us to have the same job done, basically. And I would go for one of these two bids before...
But I don't know it's the same job.
It is.
I haven't had a chance to review the other, the other bids. They were never presented to me. I never got a paper copy, and I didn't get it in my packet.
We were here for, I had a bid of...
Well, that's true of the other board numbers as well.
Oh, right. But, okay, we got copies of everything. You know where they are? We had them here. There was one for each of us. Two of them, we actually sent, I sent emails. So that part is not me. If you don't want to do it tonight and you'd like to go for the higher bids, I will tell you that Phoenix, I will not be voting for Phoenix because they made a giant mess of the parking lot over there that's gonna cost me a hundred thousand dollars. And O'Neill decided until like, the library did not work at all. They're, they have had horrible heating cooling problems since they built it, and I was the one who helped. I was the one on the board at that point. They also cost me hundreds of thousands of dollars in dirt because they decided to give us all the, because of where they put it, because we had all this like arsenic in the soil, they, they decided they wanted to keep the dirt there, so they kept having to move it, which cost me a lot of money. I was not happy with that. So, but, that said, that's just me. But, so I certainly, I mean, we can postpone this, certainly could, but...
I'm not understanding your comment. It cost you personally?
Well, no, you know, the library. I was on the board at that point, so it's not the library.
The library too.
Correct.
Sorry, what was your, what was your point about the seventy-five thousand?
I just said it is a lot of money for this township and the O'Neill bid, the Phoenix bid, that one line is just, we can have Donna go and make copies of those bids.
Well, we have, I can go bring them, but...
Yeah.
The O'Neill one is an actual bid. I mean, it is, it's an actual bid.
And it itemizes things.
So if you wanna like weigh in on that, we could totally do that.
Just my feeling is similar to Dan, John. It sounds like you booked that and found somewhat disqualifying and tried to filter, okay, it's these two is the qualified bids, which I understand. But I think the board probably would wanna see, make sure we agree with the disqualification. Something like one line is easy. That's the point.
Yeah, the other one is, the other one is mostly money and, I don't know, personal interaction with that.
I could see, I'd be fine seeing the other.
Okay. So we will postpone about this, guys. We will postpone that till our next board meeting.
So long as the gentlemen are here, I've got some questions about the L and L bid. It says here that it will, that they will install a two-stage furnace with an air conditioning unit with case, coil, line set, ductwork, thermostat, et cetera. What's the efficiency rating on that?
Want me to introduce myself?
Yeah.
Record. Chris Lanter, Alvalo House and Heating and Heating. The foot to the HVAC portion of the whole zone.
What page are you on, Tom?
What page, man? A hundred and twelve.
I've gotta look that unit up, but it's either ninety-six or ninety-eight percent.
Ninety-six or ninety-eight? Okay. Thank you.
I had a, I had a question, actually. So the cabinets, okay, so in the foyer, or whatever, Linda's section. Who was talking of, so what exactly would we be buying? What, like the reception area and the other cabinetry?
In the plans, it calls out that in the reception area, that you have a millwork contractor set up to do work to that station.
Okay.
That we are to disassemble what's there.
Okay.
Load it in said contractor's truck or trailer. They go do whatever is supposed to be done, then they bring it back, unload it, and then install it. But there's no detail in the plans for what that is.
Okay, okay, okay. And, okay. Rick, question?
Well, my only thing is if you're gonna postpone it, then make sure you go through the contract and, because there's some differences there, you know, you've gotta compare apples to apples and for apples to apples.
But they're not, they're all, they're not all apples, though, right?
Right. Some, some stuff in, in our forum, I'm not saying so much is true, but there are some things that they're including that is not being included in the other one. So, you know, when you do a contract, you gotta take all that into consideration. I would suggest, because my opinion, I'd like, you'd like to get this thing going before we start getting cold weather and stuff like that, but instead of holding off the next meeting, if they could make a suggestion, I'd be to hold a special meeting if you're gonna postpone this sometime between now and our next, next meeting to get this resolved so we can get it going, because there's a lot of crap work that these guys have to do to get, and they're not just gonna come in here and start ripping things apart. There's a lot of things that we have to do, like there's the fire hall, if there's cold stuff, we gotta get rid of, we gotta move that, we gotta do something with it. So, I, I mean, there's a lot of things to consider, so, I mean, this has gone on since, what, January? If, if we're gonna do it, it seems like it better now than later, is my opinion.
Did someone, I'm sorry. If I may ask, did someone do that analysis that's available for others to review in terms of the proposals relative to each other?
What type?
The proposals relative to one another, apples to apples, or apples, oranges, whatever. Has someone done that analysis?
No.
Well, it'd be pretty hard to do the Phoenix analysis, that's for certain. And when I looked through the difference between L and L and Cornerstone, and I'm sorry if Cornerstone is here, and I'm, I noticed that, that the L and L proposal is much more detailed. For instance, this is just something, because I'm a woman, that popped out at me, they don't even talk about cupboards in this, in Cornerstone's proposal. They don't talk about any kind of specifics for finishes at all, and the L and L proposal does. Those are the kinds of things having, and I'm sure you've built houses too, that pop out at me as someone evaluating, what do I get for my dollars, that these folks are just laying right out. And Cornerstone, for instance, is silent on those sorts of things. In the L and L, I, I've, in the L and L proposal, they're talking about some things that I wanted to ask about, and I'm not sure quite who. Such things as owner-provided surface mount light fixtures. I mean, they get down to that detail. And I'm, I'm wondering, what are we, what are we, you know, what are we signing up? And only because we got stumped so badly on the lights in our parking lot did that pop out at me like that. And, and the gentleman explained, Chris explained the owner's millwork, what that phrase meant, so we can put that aside. He answered the question about the efficiency rating. We're getting a ninety-six to ninety-eight percent efficiency rating on the one furnace. Cornerstone has a ninety-two. They did get quite specific on that one. I'm just, I'm, I'm just with Rick on this. It's time to get moving. Mike has presented the lowest bid, the most detailed bid. Rick has been with every one of the people who have come here, walked through, and made suggestions, and asked questions, and provided bids. So if anyone could analyze, now, now, he's not a spreadsheet kind of a guy, but if he were to put it down in a spreadsheet, you would find that these items are, this is the best bid, Dan.
I, I wasn't expecting necessarily a spreadsheet, you know, write it on a piece of paper, but if someone's done that analysis, it would be helpful. So you, you've shared some things, which is good, and, but if Rick has done further analysis, maybe you'd like to share it.
I'll, I'll go for this. I appreciate you all filtering, not wasting our time on things that are clearly disqualifying and government procurement of some of the boxes to check that doesn't need it, we don't see it. I thought, and the two that we saw, that L and L was the kind of more comprehensive or detailed proposal for a procurement package, especially with the details on a Gantt chart, which I think is excellent. So I think that would be the distinguishing factor there, maybe a performance, or performance on ass projects. I don't know if you have anything to feedback on any of those topics with either of these groups at all.
Well...
References?
Yeah, just put in the packet.
Yeah. So question, has anybody called references in? Did any of the other bids come with references?
Yeah.
Question for L and L. For the concrete, you're talking about vapor barrier with a ten-gauge wire mesh. Any reason why you're going with wire mesh instead of wire?
That was the architect's specification.
It was.
Yes. We tried to make sure we put the proposal together is exactly in line with the construction documents so that intentionally would be easier to compare again with other bids.
Any reason for recommending a seven percent contingency instead of ten?
No, typically, the contingency is set with the architect, but he didn't set one, so we just went with a standard that we do.
How often do you utilize contingency?
It's a complicated answer because with what we're doing, most of it, we're stripping down to the bare structure and then building up from there, so I'm not sure what we will find contingent. And in a lot of our projects, it's not as down to the studs, and then when we, you know, pull things back, we're able to find where, but if I was gonna ballpark, probably thirty, forty percent of our projects dip into a contingency, but not maybe see them.
Thanks. So was there anything on this bid that you're not accustomed to?
That I'm not accustomed to?
Yeah, that you haven't done before.
No. It's a fairly simple project as far as that goes, yeah.
I just wanna say you made a very strong positive impression on me when we walked through the building, and I, and I, I do appreciate you. I, I have a hard time making the decision tonight because there's bids that we've received that I have not seen at all, not at all. I do have a couple of questions. One of the things that was missing from the two packages that I did see doesn't include anything as far as insulation over the area that is currently a garage, and I know personally that that is insufficiently insulated. So I think if we don't do something there, no matter what the efficiency of the furnace is, it's gonna be cold in the winter and hot in the summer. How would you address that?
I don't remember the detail in the plans if it had addressed insulation in the ceiling or...
No, it's not.
So if, if it's not, typically, I'm a big proponent of spray foam insulation, so if we're gonna be opening that ceiling up or before we close that ceiling up...
The area's accessible.
Yeah, but, yeah, because that's a pitch room, so it, it would be easy to pop that roof it by putting spray foam insulation right up underneath the roof sheet.
Because I, I, I'm not familiar with the detailed plan. Are we talking about having a, a lower ceiling?
There's a drop ceiling in there, yes. There's a lower ceiling.
So would it be best insulate there or up in the attic?
I prefer to insulate before letting the inclement weather in, so it's, it's a better sealed package if it's spray foam right to the envelope.
Okay. And forgive me, forgive my ignorance, but maybe you could just address your proposal about how it impacts the security for our staff and the security for our property during the full course of this project, because at least in one of the proposals I read, it seemed to indicate that we might have our receptions in, in this room. seemed to indicate that we might have our receptions in, in this room. And currently, we're behind, you know, a closed window and a locked door, so I'm concerned about the security of the person, and, and I'm concerned about the security of the property during the twenty-four hours during the course of the project, could you talk about that?
As, as far as the security for public interaction during operational hours, the thought was that with a relocation plan for current staff, that was one suggestion we had, was setting up shop over here. I believe I put in there, simply just putting a desk or tables and chairs here for interaction, but it could be.
Some people don't know how to behave.
It could be made more secure, but, but in there, I also put that there's no dollars in the proposal allocated to such arrangements, so it, it's not, it just would need to be discussed more to find out what that need is more specifically, and then we can get creative about how we can create that subdivision.
We're, we're open Monday through Thursday, eight AM to four PM. How would that work with your work schedule in terms of outside of our normal business hours?
Well, it would be our preference to make arrangements, do a lot of the heavy demo on Friday and Saturday when you guys aren't here, so that we don't impact that, but it's very common to either work out access so we could start earlier and stay later, or we would set our crews for those hours, depending on what is accommodating with your, with the schedule for access. The, the more time we're able to spend here, the quicker we can get the project done, that would be our desire.
I'm wondering, things like when we remove the overhead doors from the garage, how do we make sure that our election equipment is secure?
Yeah, they won't be left open unintended, it will be closed up before the night time comes, so if we take the doors down, in the event that we're not building walls at that time, we would put up a temporary barricade that would protect the access to the building.
That, that's part of what Rick was referring to when he said the garage is full of stuff, that a lot of it is election stuff, and we'll have to store that. My, I've got a concern about, if we get behind schedule, we have an election we have to run on the fourth of November, and you've got down here that you'll be doing foundation and concrete work, and I'm assuming that's all in the, in the garage, and, okay.
Yep. So it's hard to speak to that, especially if it's being tabled for a meeting, so maybe that we're not doing foundations at that point in time?
Right.
But without knowing what your schedule was when we put this together, it was just trying to.
We didn't even know.
We knew the most expert that had scheduled.
No, we didn't know.
No, it's our unlucky day.
So, I wanted to point out, you brought up a good point, but that, there's gonna be a hole, like I already said, at the building, even if Linda's like over here, because there's gonna be a whole lot of, I understand that.
There could be a temp, there could be a temp wall built to, to separate that, that's.
Okay, 'cause I, I mean, we do have enough room for Linda and that type of building and we get all of that.
See, it's kind of like one out of ten thousand people don't know how to behave themselves, and I don't want my valued employee to be in harm's way.
Okay. All right, if there are any other, if there are any other questions?
I'm open to a special meeting, you may find that shocking.
Well, oh, that's good.
What, what is the time duration from start to finish, assuming everything goes smoothly?
As we edit that out, it's four months.
Just fun to hear you say that. And what are some issues that we could face that could cause delays?
The biggest issues we encounter for schedules is getting the owners to make the selections that they like. So getting your feedback on what flooring is, what, whatever finishes are, those are our biggest struggles, so if you guys are good at making decisions, we can make it painless. If you struggle to make decisions, it's hard for us to keep a schedule if you don't know what we're putting in yet.
And do we have a list of what those decisions are, or what the, the questions are?
So, so a lot of it falls in, if you look at our proposal, on the right-hand side, starting on page two, you'll see items that are under the header allowances. Those are items that need to be selected, and that's the budget we've given you to select them. So one of the first things our project management team does is then give you that list, help provide samples, help provide guidance on what we would recommend, and, and help make it painless as possible.
I'm sorry, I missed the first part of the question, that they're utilized under the allowance.
Yeah, if you look on page two, starting on page two in our proposal, you'll see down the right-hand side, not the far right column, but just shy of that, those are allowance numbers, so anything that has allowance to the right, it is something that needs to be selected.
Thank you.
Nothing in particular for long lead items?
Not that I foresee, no.
Well, and so, I was gonna bring this up, about this, is, so in the, when we did the library, we had like a subcommittee basically, who, who, you know, I mean, this is not as bad as that, they had a big average chair, everybody victory, but like, if we wanna do that, so we have a group, not it, I get it. I mean, I'll be on it, I'm just talking anyway, so, so we can think about that.
But we did that for a while.
Yeah, I mean, at least, it doesn't seem like a lot, really, I mean, but.
In the interest of time, does the twenty-fourth work for anybody?
I'm out. Trauma, the day of twenty-third. Don't want that stuff.
I'm not doing.
Wow.
What works for sure?
The twenty-second.
I'm okay with that.
Are you okay? They're gonna be out of town for both, right?
Yeah, I'm sure.
Oh, you can get me.
I could, I could do the twenty.
Yeah, I'm sure.
I think I can do that.
Dan, do you know?
I'm, I'm checking.
Okay.
Also, aimed confidence in hearing from Mr. Lampier this evening. I'm available on the twenty-third.
I make the motion that we postpone this to a special meeting until Tuesday, September twenty-three at seven PM.
Can we do it earlier?
Sure.
Six?
Six PM.
Everybody make six?
I'll be an hour late.
Can you make, can you make sixteen?
I should be able to.
Okay. Sorry, well, sir, second John's motion.
'Cause I gave it.
Second.
Oh, you did it. Okay. All of it.
All right.
All right. Well, we got some good answers, so. And then, so I do, and again, so I have the other, the, they, there's one for each of us, so if you would wanna come in either after tonight, or, you know, sometime during the week, I can just put them in your mailbox, it's true, so that's fine, whenever you get them. Okay. All right, thanks, Chris.
Yeah, thanks, thank you.
All right, all right. Yeah, this is no reflection on you at all.
No, I appreciate the opportunity to answer questions.
All right, molder mediation, which actually kinda goes along with this. So we have the molder, we have the report. Good news, no horrible black hole. Bad news, we still have to figure out what to do about the outside of the building. And so, I guess I wanted thoughts on, are we planning on doing something more extensive and maybe, and making a change order to do like this side of the building too? Or Rick and I are gonna work on just kind of buttoning it up for now, and we'll come back to the rest of the building after we get the renovations done? So, what would it be, so we'd have to take the siding off, right, and then just caulk in the box?
Some flashing, um. There's no sense fixing the inside of the building until we get the outside fixed. Have to take siding off and, and the windows were never installed properly, there's, I mean, I don't know, I got pictures of holes in the flashing where the water's coming in, and it, it, it needs to be remedied, and the only way to do it is take the siding off and, and seal around the windows. It, it's gonna be a fairly difficult job, but it can be done.
This fall yet, or you think the next spring, or?
You gotta stop the water.
Yeah, I think we'd have to do it.
You gotta stop the water.
Well, you said button it up, is there something you can button up now?
Oh, no, what I'm talking about was like, you know.
Or really do it.
I think we're just doing it, I mean. If you're gonna, you know, I wouldn't put it off too long, but there's some talk about replacing the windows and, and reciding that whole wall, which would, would repair the situation if the new ones are put in properly. I mean, somebody's gonna pay attention, because these weren't put in properly. So, do you do it now, do you do the whole thing, or do you just tear the siding off and repair around the windows what's, what's leaking now, and, and worry about it at a later date? But one thing it should do is get the water done.
I think you fix it. Fix it, once and for all.
Once and for all. Like, that is a change order, fix it?
Well, it depends on how much it is or whether.
Right, well, and that's, yeah, so, we can look, let's just use L, okay, I'll, I'll set here, I get the window all the way up and allowed, so I can hear something.
Is it ju, just this wall, or is it all?
Well, they went around the night.
No, they had some moisture over here as well.
Right.
I thought I said this was all by God's office?
So there, yeah, so, and we haven't, obviously opened the walls up over there, so it's, should have our mold report, uh, like in last week, there was a, along with the diagram, yeah, this was, it's not in here anymore, but, so, it's basically, so these win, some of these windows, and then one in between Bill and Chuck, which we're gonna have that wall fixed anyway, because that's part of the plans. And then there is one, like so on that, so it's on, that's on the, my God, it'll be on the other end anyway, right, so we're gonna fix that one already, because that one's gonna get replaced, those are, we're, I, I'm planning on, this is a weird thing, we talked, or at least I talked to the architect about doing that whole wall at the same time, which makes the windows all match, so.
I would say get the change order to select the contractor, seems like the most.
I mean, we will have the people here.
Right.
But they gotta do that whole siding inside.
The materials have a better chance of matching.
Yeah, the siding, yep, so, okay, so any other thoughts?
Just, Eric, how old's the building?
Thirty?
Ninety-two. Ninety-six, ninety.
Well, ninety's only so, thirty.
Yep.
It's a thirty-year-old building.
Well, it's in good shape, aren't they?
Very healthy. I'd say so, yeah.
So would it make sense to consider replacing all these windows?
Ultimately, I would, I wouldn't be recommending that over like this year or next year, you know, again, right, so.
I'm sure there's more efficient windows.
Yeah, oh, I know, there, I mean, there are, so.
I just have a question just because I'm here listening. The relocation plan recommends that we relocate to here when that happens, does this time we need to align with that?
Yes.
Yeah, it would be, at that point, we're gonna be opening up the outside wall.
If we are gonna come in here, then this needs to be fixed first before we come in here.
Before or after?
Before or after, 'cause I mean, that's something, we can, we're not, obviously I can put off the mold mitigation, but it, it is something we can still deal with, but it's not like I have to, otherwise we wouldn't be in this room right now, right? So, um. Okay, so, Tony, would, I mean, I guess, I would, at this point, I guess, if we're gonna have to like mess around out there, I'd, I'd wanna change order for that, but I understand like the whole money part, so.
I think, personally, I think it should be separate.
Okay.
I, I really do, I think there should be, there's the renovation, and then there's the exterior.
Okay.
That's how I feel. And to put off the renovation and throw us into yet another year when prices are going up, to, you know, to put in, get them to price out a change order for whatever it is we're gonna do, I.
I don't see it putting off the timeframe, Tony.
You don't?
No.
The way I do.
No.
I'd get him started.
No, and they gotta get done, regardless, they gotta get done, this is, it's all capital proven either way, and, I.
Are we talking, are we talking just waterproofing, or are we talking like replacing windows and, and everything?
So, so what it would be, if we decided to go that route, is, so essentially, we're gonna do that whole side of the building?
Yes.
So it would be basically adding this side of the building just for siding and windows, because everything else is, I don't know. So, it looked like, what was it, what was something like eight hundred a window that was in this, I'll, I'll custom build. It was like, two windows, oh, yeah, so it's, yeah, 'cause they have to have round ones too, so, it would be fifteen hundred about.
Price were okay over there.
So, well, that was the thing, I was not going to mess with the front or the back or.
They were okay, that was fine.
Right, yeah, so it's basically the ends, do you wanna do the ends now, or do you wanna break the sides?
I don't think there's one, yeah, there's moisture over here.
The bottom line is, if you're gonna get the siding torn off to redo the, uh.
Caulking.
The flash up, the caulking, and then if you get them replaced, you're gonna get the siding torn off to redo it.
Right.
Do it once.
Okay. All right, that was my thought, but.
Yeah, maybe we can get a bid proposals to do the fix, or we can get, and get a bid to do replacement.
Both of them, do it as like, so, okay. Okay. And again, this isn't something we have to do right, you know, right now, but.
Yeah, I, I mean, we get bids from many, or whomever wants to respond, but I would recommend that we utilize the same contractor, if it is in relationship, because then, you know, two people.
Yep.
Two firms out here, you know.
One mobilization.
Okay.
I agree.
All right, so, yeah, so that's, thank you, I will be there, okay. Okay, so, we have a request from the Historical Society. Let's see. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but essentially, this is to waive the fee for their submission of a change to their special use permit, three, oh.
He can see, I was calling their.
To the change, change to their special use permit, that's what the fee for, right?
Right, there were, when the special use permit was amended to do the concrete, there was some confusion that was created, that wasn't clarified, whether the conditions of the special use permit applies to just the, the grounds or the crossroads community hall, because they were separated, and that's creating a confusion. So the best way to address that is to just amend the special use permit, clarify those conditions, and, you know, so that it's clear for all of us. So that was recommended, and the Historical Society agreed with us, with the recommendation, and they applied for a special use permit amendment. This does not involve any site plan changes, it's just involving understanding the scope of work, the activities, and the conditions of approval. So we, based on the fee schedule, we suggested a four hundred dollar fee for a special use permit, not the eighteen hundred one that's typically applied when there's a site plan involved. And I think the Historical Society would like us, would like, is requesting the board to waive the four hundred dollar fee. Data Albert is here, if you have any questions for her.
Should we tell us again what's, what is.
Sure, can you tell us again what's been, what has changed?
What has been changed?
Yes.
Okay, so, when the concrete, uh, special use permit was approved, um, there were some conditions of approval invol- included in the final approval, that there will not be any alcohol on the premises, there's some conditions associated with, uh, the timeline of it, and, um, number of events per year and stuff like that, and, um, Crossroads has been acting, Dita, currently if I'm wrong, has been operating a little bit independently than the grounds in terms of activities, you know, they have men's coffee hour, they have, you know, they have people have meetings over there. Um, so, that confusion is there, and then also, there was a discussion of parking at the time, which wasn't, uh, clearly addressed, and then because there is a parking arrangement happening between the township and the Historic Society, there was also a recommendation made by me that maybe something more formal should be in place as part of the special use amendment.
Like, so the things with like, for, all the event parameters, safety, lighting, is that all been approved already, or is that all new?
No, uh, this is, okay, um, so basically, we are going for a special use permit that would correct all the things that were done over the years with different governments or people there to make it more cohesive, a simple special use permit, as opposed to five different ones, uh, over the time, and certain of them unintentionally covered, uh, the whole Historic Society, including Crossroads, which it shouldn't have. So, with, uh, the zoning board and working with three, uh, we are trying to correct it and clarify, and we'll be going in front of the zoning board, uh, you know, which we have gone through a couple of meetings. So, in October, we will go with the final recommendation of what we would like to have in front of the zoning board. So, the four hundred dollar fee, um, so what we are asking is the historian to waive the fee, because it's actually, you know, correcting certain things that are unclear and, you know, just making it one cohesive thing, and since we are a volunteer organization, nonprofit, and then, you know, anything we can save.
All right, so all the terms that are in here, this is for the planning commission to say?
Is it planning or zoning?
Planning commission, not zoning.
Okay, I was wondering.
To answer Brad's question, um, this amendment will allow us an opportunity to address any parking or lighting issues that haven't addressed in the past.
Behind the planning commission.
Right, by the planning commission, and then it will come to you guys for final approval. Planning commission is gonna make a recommendation, but it is subject to board's final approval.
So, are we actually here today for waiving this four hundred dollars instead of this?
Yeah.
Yes, that's all it is.
I do have one quick question, though, Dita, do you, do you look, are, are you looking at adding more lights, um, on the site? I mean, the walkway was put in, and it's very nice, but there's not a lot of, like, lights there.
Yes, um, that is, that is one of the proposals that we will be going, we, um, actually, everything is with the night sky ordinance and everything, but we are definitely putting lighting, because if we have any events during night hours like Christmas in the village, you can't see anything. And so, as a first step, we are putting this, uh, this year, lights on all the buildings, which before they didn't have, so that will help with it. And also, what we are proposing is to put some lights along the walkway to keep it safe for, for public. So, we're hoping, who's craving the dollars to have it there?
The four hundred dollars covers review by two separate boards?
It would, it would get a start, uh, which is one of the other indications in that, that, um, there might be additional reviews. This one would just get us, get them in front of the planning commission. Like I said, I just learned that they have plans to, uh, install additional lighting, that was not part of my initial discussion. Uh, my understanding is that they're just, um, looking at type of uses, refining their event list, and then, uh, modifying the special use permit. I, four hundred dollars would not definitely cover it, there will be additional reviews.
Have they been waiving some musical events there now, or that's currently done?
Um, so, I, I, I just opened up the, uh, the special use conditions that were approved, where all operations, events will be conducted during daylight hours and concluded by dusk. Rehearsal and performance noise abide, abides by the township noise ordinance, no smoking or alcohol allowed. The board requests that if additional offsite parking is needed, that the township hall parking lot used, if available, to avoid people having to crossroad. Those were the conditions that were part of the, uh, last special use.
And now they're talking about music until ten P M.
They have Christmas events that happen after dusk. So, those are all the things that need to be reanalyzed, and I, I would suspect there will be additional fees.
Are those indoor, on major?
No.
Well, the only thing we have outdoor during the winter is the Christmas in the village, and the only music that's being played is, uh, carolers singing in front of the building. We do not use audio music or anything like that. The, uh, so, right now, is what we are talking about here is the special uses, so we will go, um, over each item at the meeting, so we can clarify all of this before, and then comes to some kind of a decision, I would be acceptable. We don't do a whole lot of outdoor events, um, we have maybe four major ones. Jamboree that just happened, what was a musical event that ends at five o'clock. The reason for the lighting, right now, just buildings, uh, is for things that are gonna be happening inside the building, not outside. And as far as you saying about weddings, uh, maybe receptions, but we're not looking to become a, a wedding venue per se, but if somebody wanted to have a reception or something, but that would be, um, that was put into the packet, it's gonna come in front of the planning commission, and I figured that there is going to some, be some questions and discussions and clarifications. Uh, one of the reasons why we are not only to actually have a clear, concise special use permit, but also us being a, um, a historic village with, without any kind of support, we're a volunteer, we're self-funded, we have to have ability to make money, you know, so we can pay for the maintenance, we can, uh, you know, fix the roofs or do whatever, and, uh, you know, letting us expand a little bit, um, some of these things that were covered before, uh, would give us the opportunity to have some fundraisers, so we can cover our expenses to maintain the village. So, that's where, what we are, why we are asking to waive the fee.
I, I understand that on the fee, um, you start drifting towards banquet type facilities and the wedding bar question this year for so long? I mean, that, and I, with music and alcohol, those are questions that I raise, significant questions for you.
Yeah, we really, if you look at the historic village, we don't really have, uh, what you call it, any place built, building big enough to do any of that. You know, we have the mass museum, the town hall and all of that. The only thing, if, uh, somebody wanted to have a reception or something, you know, on the grounds in the summer, but we, you know, we pretty much, that is not what we advertise, we do rentals and events and whatever.
I think we are getting a little ahead of ourselves with wedding events, Dita, we, we talked about it. The current use that is defined, that defines, uh, Historic Society is an archaeological park, which is a special use under Ag District, and that limits to an area and structures used for recreating, reenactments of state of matters relating to the life or culture of residents of the area, so it does not permit events at this time. She's asking for it, but we're telling, uh, the current designation wouldn't, it might require another procedure to allow for events, so, that's not.
Right, well, and, I mean, my understanding is, some of this is gonna be, as we discussed, like, the next master plan and.
Yes, yes, so that would be phase two.
Preaching.
Right, if, uh, anything that they would do has to fall within that archaeological park limitations. Any use beyond that has to be a rezoning that needs to be addressed maybe, you know, a couple of years later. But right now, it's just about, I think the one condition that says all operation events conducted during daylight hours concluded by dusk, Historic Society is understanding that it only applied to concrete, but the special use approval and the whole discussion was made for the entire, so that's the confusion, that's the disconnect that needs to be clarified with this amendment, that's what's on it.
They put both property IDs on it, where they should never have done that. So, honestly, I'm not sure we, um, could have actually, but, go ahead.
So, I, I, uh, I want you to clearly understand me, and if you don't, please ask questions. I, speaking for myself, I strongly support the Historical Society, and it is one of the types of entities that state law allows us to support financially. The annual request for money that you have made, in my opinion, has been weak, year after year, and I think that you should put together a better plan with more meat on the bones about what money that you would like us to put in our budget at our March budget meeting. Having said that, I hate waiving fees. There's gonna be two boards that are gonna review your application, and there's a lot of man-hours that go into that, and I'm totally opposed to waiving the fee.
Okay, so, any more discussion about this? Okay. So, if anyone would like to move to waive the fee?
I'll make a motion to waive the application fee with, with your time to the Historic Society's special use permit, given its, uh, heritage and relationship to the township and being a voluntary, uh, organization to support their, uh, fundraising goals, if you will.
Second. Okay. Any other discussion?
Just a clarification from myself, John raised a really good point, is four hundred dollars enough? Depending on what they propose, there might be additional fees, so this motion is just for the current fee.
Okay, with that in mind, um, that's a few, oh, oh, right, it's mine.
Aye.
Aye. No. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, media approval request.
We, um, that sort of came to me, um, Shelley's not here to lead on this. They are asking, um, for an appraisal for, uh, unit twenty twenty-four dash seven, not to exceed thirty-two hundred fifty dollars, and this is from Shelley, uh, Mrs. Versick. This property was recently awarded A C E P funding, we did not expect this money to come through, so we need to submit an appraisal to move forward. This property is forty-three acres of farm, fields, wetlands, and woods. I would move to approve, um, of the appraisal for twenty twenty-four dash seven, not to exceed thirty-two hundred fifty dollars.
For, okay. Question?
Does anybody know what A C E P stands for?
I do.
Come on. Come on.
I assume it's some grant, but.
Okay. All right, um, we're discussing in roll call.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Okay, thank you. Ayes have, all right, invoice for office furniture.
Um, this is another, uh, item we are repurposing, I guess that's the best word. We have been repurposing the small conference room as an office space for Elena, Kalija, and Mrs. Whitney for about a year now. Um, they've been working on tables, Elena has brought in a TV cart table from her home basement, so that she has something to put her telephone on. Um, we've gone out and gotten bids, and this is the best supplier for the furniture. What you're seeing here is the way it's broken down into different light items, but the total is, um.
Nine thousand, two hundred, thirty-five dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Thank you, John, that's the total for this, yes.
What is the anticipated delivery date, and?
It would be delivered, uh, what, approximately three weeks after we, for the, it delivered and installed.
So, given, in relationship to the renovation project work?
Nothing will be going on in that office, nothing is scheduled to be done in that office, not on the exterior. I don't know, but it should not involve.
He said nothing is attached, so it will be.
So, it would be, but, I mean, there would be exterior with window over there, but that would be closed off.
Yeah, it could be, it would be closed off, yeah, there, there's no conflict, um, as far as installing the furniture and then having, if we have to have the window replaced.
It's nine two three five ninety-seven, check.
Nine two three five ninety-seven.
And what's the line item and what's this company?
It's multiple line items, it's all out of Department two sixty-two, uh, some is, uh, election equipment, some is office furniture and equipment, some is computer equipment and hardware.
Tony?
Why are these four different quotes?
It's four different groups of, how can I say, actually, it's three. Um, it's different groups of, um, functionality, okay? One is the election, pretty much election-specific item, um, which would be the table and the storage cupboards and that sort of thing. Another one is the work surfaces, and another, what's the third one, it's the, um, the dividers and, and that sort of thing. But to look at it, if I were to pick those parts out, I wouldn't really know what I was talking about, because they're specific to being pulled from a warehouse.
Jeffy, the last page is backwards.
Yes.
It's those people backwards.
I'm just looking at the quote, I'll have different numbers as well.
Yes.
Yeah, this is the beginning, right? Now, is somebody gonna come in and assemble all of this?
Stock, installing, yes. That's the installation.
That's included in this?
Correct. Yes, Frank, you look puzzled.
No, I was waiting to see if Dan has any concerns, and I was about to make a motion.
Where does it indicate? Where's it indicate, indicate installation, others, product or installation and trash removal? Page one forty-seven.
He chose to put it all in, in one. You're not buying a pig in a boat, believe me. They'll deliver it and install it and remove their garbage.
So, shipping is a line item to the pages and not the others? And installation's only on one, so.
It's all being installed, that's just the way you know.
So, should those charges be distributed amongst various line items that they're coming from, or being allocated to? coming from or being allocated to?
Yes, they should be.
So how are we gonna do that?
How would we do that? Probably proportionally by, by a percentage, this is, for instance, um...
Maybe there's nothing to install on, on page, I don't know.
Yeah, it's all...
And it's not much money, but, I mean, you obviously talked with them, but meaning they're only installing on page 147.
That's just the way you broke it down. And different, and for different, I know, I know, we've got it covered. What should I say, trust me?
I would hope that we purchased the little ring commercial furniture to the amount that John Shar just, how much is the number, John?
Ninety-two, a hundred, thirty-five dollars and ninety-seven cents.
It's in there.
Yeah, so will we.
Okay. Well, second. Any other discussion?
When will it be delivered?
Probably three weeks after it's approved.
Okay. I'm sorry, who supported? Me. I've logged in. Okay, um, roll call. Frank?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Okay, ayes have. And now we're in discussion, possible action, um, the website, so, oh, wait, there's a aye, it's aye. Ah, sorry, thank you, got it in right there.
Oh, yeah, uh, thank you. So, uh, right now, the Deputy Treasurer is not a signer on the accounts, um, and Linda Savitsky, former Deputy Treasurer, Weiss, uh, remains a signer on the account. Um, I was making arrangements to add Amanda and remove, um, Linda, and, uh, learned that PNC changed their, uh, their policy, so they require meeting minutes that show that this board authorizes, uh, the addition of Amanda Weiss as a signer and the removal of Linda Savitsky as a signer, so I would like to make the following motion. Uh, motion to add Amanda Weiss as an authorized signer on all PNC, uh, accounts and all Flagstar accounts, and to delete Linda Savitsky from all PNC accounts and Flagstar accounts. Further, Amanda Weiss and Donna Whitney shall be granted access to PNC Pinnacle to enable them to process electronic payroll, uh, electronic payments, I misspoke.
Okay, I will second that motion. Any discussion?
Do, um, we need Donna's last name in the motion?
Donna Whitney, yeah, I said Whitney in the, uh, so Donna is already a signer.
For the Pinnacle?
The only thing that she's being added for is Pinnacle.
Pinnacle, right?
Yeah. I, I have her last name written, I thought I said it, but maybe I didn't.
Okay, I'm reading what is on here, I assume that sort of you were following, it was a deviation somewhere or something. Just so they don't say, well, we don't have Donna.
Some extra Donna's.
Tony wrote the language, I'm gonna hand it to Donna, who I presume already has the language.
Yes.
Is that what this is, John?
I don't know what that is.
Well, the piece of paper was...
This is something that Tony handed me today.
Is it just a motion?
What you have is the email from John to me saying, please put this on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the motion John wrote.
Which John wrote is similar to this, so I thought that's what would be written, so my apologies, but...
No, that's fine.
I guess, you know, similar to the P D R, you may still have that motion.
I'm sorry.
It, it's written, you know?
Well, Tony wrote it for me, I did not come prepared on this regard, and this, this just came up, um...
So, there was a motion, did someone support it?
I did.
Okay. Mike, I can't hear you.
Oh, really? Oh, yeah, you're right. That's weird, I normally have to be this close. Okay, um, please, second. Any other discussion? Okay, um, roll call? Roll call. Dan?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Now, we can go, thank you. Oh, ayes have. Um, website. So, Bill, here's something to share you for us.
Um, I think a little bit of an update, I know at the last couple of meetings, we said we're gonna distribute a survey to gather input, uh, because at that time, there was no clarity on what is required from us for the R V C to do their refresh. Uh, Bill and I spoke with them, um, and then I think there's a bit better clarity on what's expected and what the timeline is. So the refresh is, um, 2,880, that includes a markup with three rounds of changes, so they're gonna do a whole re, uh, redo, uh, facelift for the website, it's gonna be, you know, different color scheme, different themes, the buttons are gonna be more user-friendly, uh, universal design, and, um, and then that website will be, um, active for five years, and then we would do another similar refresh after five, end of fifth year again. Uh, this does not include major changes to how the website is organized, except it's just includes changes to how it looks and feels. As part of the refresh, they gave us a questionnaire, a kickoff questionnaire to see, uh, to provide, to ask us for input, which is limited input, which is covered under the refresh, and some other technical questions regarding to timeline and everything. While I was reading through the agenda, what I did was I took those limited, the design-related questions, I put them in a, a Google survey, I'm gonna send it to all board members. If you can get your responses back to us by September 30th, we can kick off the refresh process, because the process takes about five or six months, once we complete the questionnaire and have the initial meeting. Uh, so the options would include whether you want your, whether you wanted any quick links, is there any way you would like to see the calendar differently, the primary navigation, would you like to see anything different, the image size of it, and they also, um, had three formats, modern, traditional, and combined, and they gave some example websites for you to go and look at how that feels. My personal favorite is modern. Um, I think that, that's pretty much it, I'm gonna go ahead and send the survey to the board, uh, I do not plan on sending it to anybody else beyond the board, if you feel like any other input would be helpful, I'm happy to forward it to them, but, um, happy to answer any questions you have.
Do you know, Sri, if, um, we decide to do the documents on demand, once we get things scanned in and so on, can our website now handle that?
Yes, so we did ask them about that, because for 2,880, we get the basic things they have offered every one of their clients, but if you wanted to add on any other capabilities like docs on demand, stuff like that, they said they can always give us a, you know, another estimate to add to that. So, the first two weeks after we complete the questionnaire, there's just gonna be initial meetings, and then the six to eight weeks is when they would do a markup. They said if you'd like to add any major changes, that would be a good time to ask them to do it, if not, we can still ask them, it will just extend the timeline.
Uh, like, two comments, I guess, I think, uh, opening it up to the planning commission would be of interest. Um, then the docs on demand thing, we're accumulating a huge number of photographic surveys for all these roads, and that have something that's SharePoint-like, that maybe interfaces through our website or a users portion of our website, that we can then distribute or archive documents, be nice to be able to send those off with appropriate numbers in your organization.
I can ask, they did include something that talks about web, web application integration, so I'll see if that's one of the options they're offering.
Is there additional pages within this that are in line, I'm missing page two and four of five, which is great.
Um, the last one might be just a signature page.
We have a signature page.
Oh, then, um...
No, yeah, you're right. We've only got one, three, and aye.
It probably just scan one, one side, it's scanned when it's a double-sided print, I'll make sure we get all pages when I send the survey out.
So the, the total of this is 2,880, and a time period, you said five months?
Five to six months, so let me pull that out.
They can't be working on it all the time.
No, I think they're probably out...
Certainly is bad. Did we approve monies for this activity already? I did. Yeah, okay, so it's in, in addition to, is, is it included? Yeah, and it came with the, you know, it kind of comes with the revive over, you know, the annual software suspension, all the other stuff too, right, so, it wasn't specific only to the website refresh? It's like basically their package or issue here. It just comes with the website issue.
Uh, one to two weeks initial setup, meetings, designer selection, six to eight weeks discovery and design approval, two to four weeks HTML development, five to six weeks custom development CMS enabling, and then a couple other weeks for quality assurance, content migration, stuff like, and then, uh, training for about one to three weeks, training how to update, modify, do stuff. So all this together is about twenty to twenty-four weeks.
Okay, um, along with this, I just wanted to let you guys know, so they were ready to put up the televisions, or at least, you know, to go there and there, now that we know we don't have to worry about black hole, but they, um, they made a suggestion that we, um, put in power, like up on the wall, and then also like the fiber optic thing, so I'm gonna get some quotes for that before we do the TVs, 'cause I kind of agree, fully software we can get, the better, so.
Okay.
But I'll, yeah, I'll bring them, I'll bring that up, does that be kind?
I, I was just gonna ask a question, is this ceiling, is this a drop ceiling, so they can...
Yes.
They can wire it up there?
Yeah.
That helps.
So we are gonna, you know, maybe moving this thing while we're at it, because of where the TV would go, and if you drop it down, it should probably be okay, but we'll find out.
Are we looking for a brochure on this?
Oh, no, well, it's just information on the cover. I just, you know, and the survey, so we get the survey. Okay.
I think from the original document, I can email that the other page is missing is just more detail about, there's no, there are additional fees in these images, it's just more detail about expanding on that scope of work on the first page. I mean, follow that as well.
Okay, um, Parks and Rec Master Plan update.
Okay, um, we have our Parks and Rec Chair, Ryan Merrick here, and Dina Zemke, our member, I think Jeff probably was here as well. Um, so what you have in your packet is a, is a summary of the survey results and a summary of the open house. We, uh, tried to reach out to people to get their input on, uh, their thoughts about the master plan, like Tony suggested, uh, not as we hoped. We did reach out multiple ways to spread the word, uh, that's the best we could get, but there, there is some good questions and comments, but it's not sure if the majority of people share the same opinions. Um, everything's in the memo, uh, I wouldn't, you know, respecting your time, I wouldn't rephrase or, you know, restate anything that's in the memo, but if there are any specific questions, I'm happy to respond to. Um, other than that, I think what we're expecting in terms of guidance from the board tonight is, um, I know we talked about it when you guys approved the proposal, the timeline, if you want to get on to the next twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven cycle, we need to adopt the master plan by February and submit the grant application by April. If the board, after reviewing the comments, uh, are, are you guys still okay with the plan, or, you know, would you like, is there a change of opinion based on the comments? If the board thinks that there might be additional time needed, instead of trying to make for the twenty-six cycle, whether we want to make it to the 2026 cycle or the 2027 cycle, because that impacts our work timeline. Uh, Dina Zemke, um, Dina, I'm sorry, I don't, uh, the official professional, but she has extensive experience in grant writing and then has graciously volunteered to just, um, lead the grant writing efforts, but they do take time, so the sooner we get the guidance that, okay, let's shoot for this cycle, we can get started on it. Um, that's mostly what we're looking for today, uh, tonight, not any concrete decisions, but, um...
What were those, what were those, what were those dates again?
Um, I think we need to, uh, sorry, I'm gonna pack the post up when we're ready. Um, the master plan should be adopted before February, and, uh, the grant application should be completed by April 30th?
April 1st.
April 1st, not a joke, April 1st.
Yeah, no kidding, right?
No kidding.
All right.
So based, I mean, we are on track with the timeline for February adoption, uh, there might, uh, might be a slight change when the final draft will be presented to the board, we are shooting for October 24th, but it might be a week after, depending on a few of the conflicts we're trying to figure out. Uh, we can make it if we want to, but we can keep going with the master plan adoption, that is, that will be active for another five years, it's the, the better question is the grant cycle, do we want to make the grant cycle as the goal? Because there are good questions that were raised in the open house regarding the maintenance plan and the security of it and, and, you know, the long-term, so there are some big decisions that you guys need to make, talk about.
So, first, on the, on the initial acquisition funding, how much is the grant for, 50%?
Uh, up to 400,000 is the maximum, and, uh, 25% is the minimum matching required. Uh, the more you try to match, the better points you get on the scoring criteria.
So if we're gonna get 400,000, we'd have to then come up with 800 for the balance of the project, uh, for...
100.
25%. Yes.
100 gets you 400.
Yeah, we have a 1.2 billion dollar project.
Oh, we're gonna split, oh, that is what your question is, we're gonna split it.
Currently, it's been projected as two phases, the, the first phase being around 750 is what we're looking at, and that's what the board had asked us to, to explore for grant funding.
Okay.
So with that 750, if that is the, the number, and the grant's for 400, that means the township match would be 350.
All right, and then on phase two, we repeat the grant cycle, or the township would be asked to fund the rest?
No, it, it, uh, we could go for grants for that too.
All right.
At some point in the future, when, uh, you know, when there's a desire to, when the second phase.
What, what is the sustainment cost or maintenance cost?
We haven't run those projections yet, because we don't have a final design, uh, but that is, you know, certainly something that needs to be accounted for, that was prevalent in community comments that we received, it's foremost on the committee's mind, I don't, and I'm sure the board's as well, I don't think any of us wants to spend a lot of money to install something and then see it...
Well, how are all these numbers?
See it dissipate over time for lack of maintenance.
How are all these numbers generated?
Based on the concept plan.
All right, so based on the concept plan, might I encourage you to come up with something that gives us guidance on maintenance costs?
Sure.
Is there any feel for that? I mean, is it 100K a year or 20K a year, or months, or where's the decimal point?
Yeah, it's, yeah, we haven't done that study, so I hate to throw out random numbers, but I... but I would say it's far less than a hundred K.
All right, thank you.
I apologize, I think I did the math wrong, so what's the amount the board has to match?
For the grant. If the budget's seven fifty, then the grant would supply four hundred, which means the board's match will be three fifty.
Right, but the first phase is less than four hundred. I think it was three ninety something.
No, it was around seven fifty.
It's not, it's on the back here, she was right, three eighty's was under the pink box, three seventy, base two, six eighty five, on the back. Fair enough, that's, that's a big.
Yeah, no, it is, it is, yeah, and there are also, these are construction costs, there are also below the line soft costs that would have to be added into that, so designing, engineering, testing.
Yeah, fair enough.
Thanks, Brian, I'll read a list of the calls.
A notion has been floating through my mind about this maintenance cost, couldn't we just take, what does it cost to maintain an acre of mati gardens and extrapolate?
That would be a, that would be a milestone point to look at, I suspect their maintenance costs are quite a bit higher than what we have experienced here. Really, it's, for, for the concept plan, it's really the habitat restoration, the native plantings that are going to require management over time, there's, the, the amount of mowing that's done would be greatly reduced.
Mowing's cheap.
Yeah, well, it's, it's maintenance first and management, yeah, I think we've talked about that before, that it's a, it's sort of a mindset change, moving from maintenance, which is mowing, fertilizing, et cetera, to management, which is more invasive species control. So that happens through annual controlled burns, or I don't know if we can do controlled burns here, so it'd be through annual, annual mowing, selective herbicide application or selective man, manual regrowal, so those are, those are the types of things. Other, other aspects of the plan, paths, benches, those types of elements don't really require a lot of maintenance, they're, they have a much longer lifespan and payback period, so it's, in my minds, the, the main, the management cost and effort is, is really tied up in the habitat restoration and native plantings.
So when would you want to start the grant writing process if we're gonna try to make the April first deadline?
As soon as possible.
Like as soon as possible, like today, as soon as possible?
There are, as part of that grant writing process, there are some requirements, there are some board resolutions required, public hearings required, so those, you know, those take time to, to schedule and occur, so it's, unfortunately, it's not something that we have the luxury of waiting for our last, you know, for last minute.
Yeah, so this cycles back to our funding plan in longer term, where do we want to put the three fifty, three hundred and fifty thousand, for example? I don't think, I don't think you answered that right now. All right, I wouldn't know until we go through that planning exercise.
And the phase one for seven fifty is what the board has previously passed estimate, if through your planning exercises, you come with a, a different idea of dollar figure, we can certainly go back and look at phasing and try to adjust things to, you know, to accomplish the board's goals.
I mean, so, so we table that, it's maybe if we started the grant, say for the twenty-seventh cycle, for twenty-seven, is it yearly?
Yes, it is.
So you'd want to start that like September of twenty-six?
Or earlier.
Or earlier? Which then means we'll have the plan done, but we'll be more mature on the big topics. I guess my initial, initial thought is it seems quick for twenty-six.
I think I agree with Brian, only because part of what got brought up is, I mean, not so much even the maintenance costs, but security stuff, like lighting that's not in there yet, I mean, we, we had some good comments about, there's some interesting comments in here about, so, for example, for the park, for Hudson Mills, you know, they close at dusk, but they got a fence, and we wouldn't, so we're gonna have to come up with something, right, like cameras or lighting, and maybe that would give them a chance to work on that stuff, give us a better idea about, I'm guessing, given how much pain in the butt some of these bids are, it might take a while to figure out those kind of costs.
Yeah.
But I'm fortunately willing to let them try this year too, so.
And if we're successful, then we'll have, could have a three hundred thousand dollar or more.
It, it is a.
Three fifty.
The grant store considering our reimbursement grants, so the township would actually spend the money during, during construction, and that timeline is out there a little ways. So if we, if we receive the grant award, then we go through a designing process for detailed design.
That's your point, come on.
Bid the project, award, and then the township would expend the funds as the speed constructed, so even if, and actually, the grant award process takes quite a while too, so we would submit the grant application April first, preliminary scoring for the grant application comes back typically in September, and the grant awards don't typically happen until December.
With construction then being twenty-seven.
And then there's probably a year of, of design and bidding, so if we, if we submitted grants for April twenty-six, we probably would not, the township would probably not be spending.
Twenty-seven.
The funds until probably twenty-eight.
Oh.
Okay, well, all right.
Yeah, that's not bad, isn't it?
Um, well, with that, a Gantt chart summarizing that would be really helpful.
So is there something, like, we could make this choice, I guess, next month, right? It's gonna not mess you up, or, I guess part, like, our sort of question would be?
Special meeting next week?
Well, I mean, if we're, if we're ready, I mean, it just seems like.
Sure, quite special meetings, obviously you can have one the next month.
So, I mean, I guess, so what you're really asking is, shall we, do you have time?
And we get started with the grant application.
So.
So it's either we, we would be potentially, if they get the grant, looking at a twenty-eight?
Yeah.
Or if we.
Or a twenty-nine, yeah.
Or a twenty-nine start date for outline.
Okay, so in the five, in the tree state of the five-year rec plan that, that we'll be continuing on regardless, is, is good for five years.
Correct.
So whether, whether the grant application occurs in April twenty-six or April twenty-seven, the five-year plan is, is still valid.
Do you feel that, that the committee and yourself, that you're all ready, that you can actually meet these deadlines for this next round? Do you feel ready for that?
I, I think we, yeah, I think we're capable of that, and, you know, it requires some, some of Sri's help as well as the committee's volunteer time, so it's, it is a, it is a challenge, but I feel that it's doable.
So if we wanted to correct along the way as these finances get sorted out, that would be during what, the design phase in twenty-six, twenty-seven?
I'm sorry, say that again?
There's a lot of financial unknowns right now, but I understand the process takes forever here, so if we put you off another year, it's off at the twenty-nine. But say there is financial hardship where these numbers, the board decides it's too much, that's, that's purely a design element function, could you adjust the design to meet a certain budget?
We would, yes, we would adjust the phasing, and there will undoubtedly be escalation that, I mean, we all know that from our personal lives, nothing ever gets cheaper, so, so there will be escalation the longer we wait, but hopefully it's, it's in a controlled fashion.
I guess I'm leaning towards getting up to start, thinking we could then adjust the pricing for the design, if it needs our financial bandwidth or.
We would just need to be careful in what we commit ourselves to in grant application, because in order to submit the application, we are essentially committed to providing certain elements within the park, and that's what the DNR is basing their scoring on, and ultimately their grant award. So whatever we promised in the application, we will have to fulfill when it comes to installation. That being said, I, I think we can leave ourselves some flexibility, to your point, as long as we carefully, carefully work that.
And the design costs are not covered by the grant that John mentioned, it's just the construction.
Correct. Brian, can you share a little more on funding from the state? DNR, is that coming from, what source is that? And what I'm getting at is, say we're successful, we win this, and we commit to spending, we spend, and it's a reimbursement grant, so, given what we've experienced with, you know, federal grants, they're, they've been rescinded and.
Yeah, so they, the DNR grant sources are obligated funds, they, they ultimately originate from oil and gas revenue, but they are legislatively protected.
Okay, so most of the legislation, legislature changes, programming, they have to do that, but that, that's a responsibility.
Yeah, I, I would need to research that with a little bit, it's my understanding that those funds are very well protected.
Okay, um, I guess, a motion to instruct the Parks Committee to apply for the next project grant funding.
Just like Ellen said, the project timeline is dependent on how quickly you make your decisions on finishes.
Well, for what it's worth, the, the roads budget, we're gonna be saving two hundred thousand a year by then.
You can only spend on roads, right?
Right?
Good question.
You could use the village, you could split the village, you wouldn't have to levy the whole village for the roads, you could split it between operating the village and road.
Okay. This is just the informational thing for me, on the map number eleven, which is the accessible path, how long is that? How many feet, you know?
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't.
Sir, do you know that one?
I don't.
And I would assume, do you, do you know what that material is supposed to be? Is that gonna be crushed rock that they're planning on?
It's, it's limestone finds, which is.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, which is, an accessible, accessible surface.
Okay.
That's crushed up.
Oh, why, do you know?
I believe, I believe we have it on the plan at eight.
Thank you.
When does concrete side look?
There's some, there's some concrete by the parking lot.
Yeah, that's terrible.
But the, but the main, the main paths through the natural areas are the limestone finds. And again, that's in the conceptual estimate, as we move forward with grant writing and also with detailed design, if there's a desire for, for paved paths in lieu of limestone finds, obviously that's more a cost, but that is something that we can write into the grant as much as there is a desire.
We do have to get a hand in one, what it's gonna cost to make payments. Yeah, I mean, that's, honestly, I worked for Parks a long time ago, and I can tell you that when you say the paths don't need maintenance, they do, they need quite a bit, and especially, I mean, anytime that you get rainfall that comes in and water goes down it, it's gonna wash it away, and especially if you've got any kind of slope, and then you're gonna have gullies, somebody's gotta be out there maintaining it, or you're gonna have people breaking their ankles, it's, there's a lot more to this than just what we're looking at, the maintenance thing is big.
I guess my high level comment here is, there's, there's things lacking here, the Gantt chart, layout, the schedule would be a big interest, and then the, the maintenance and anything that's missing, lighting and others, I guess I wanna know more of that. I can see rolling the dice and touch here, and get, try to get it going by twenty-eight, but then if we wait, we're gonna be at twenty-nine, and we could have a bunch of these answers laid out, and we'll be more mature in all our funding plan by then, I guess I'm leaning towards wait, unless somebody's convinced we should try to roll the dice.
I'll take a motion for either, either cycle, you want your motion.
Jeff, I think the estimate calls for five hundred and twenty-five cubic yards for accessible trails, limestone finds and base aggregate. Doesn't give me the linear footage, just gives me an estimate for.
You think how much?
Five, twenty-five cubic yards for the accessible trails, limestone finds and base aggregate.
If we have the linear footage, I just don't have.
Yeah, I'm looking for linear.
I just don't have that in my head, yeah.
Only that.
We can get it for you.
Anybody else's thoughts?
What, what, what is the percentage of success that you would anticipate with the grant supplemental?
It varies from year to year, depending on the number of applicants and the strength of those other applications, the, we've been considering either passport grant or natural resources trust fund grant, those, historically, those have hovered around like thirty, thirty-ish percent range, is that, is that what you remember, Shree?
Submitting.
No, success, 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 right, that's batting average.
Yeah, so we're submitting, and it's unlikely we're gonna, well, I should say.
Soon as you say unlikely.
I don't mean to cut us off, but there's the reality of.
There's a thirty-three percent chance to get it.
Yeah.
And it depends on the skill of your grant writers.
Right, yeah.
Well, I guess that's the real question, is asked, what's your batting average?
Uh, we're, we're, we do pretty well, yeah, yeah.
Come on, fifty percent?
Uh, greater, yeah.
All right, that's probably really good.
And then, what is, we're going down the trail here, I would assume we would.
Fun intended.
Another grant for the next cycle for different portions?
Possibly, and that's certainly a possibility if that's the board's desire.
And, and I guess, I mean, where I was going, what's the likelihood we win back to back like that?
There, the first grant application will be more competitive, because there are points where the township have never received a DNR grant in the past, those points go away in subsequent applications, yeah. That being said, but, so, I'm, I'm mixing my professional and professional lives here, I, I have a design firm, engineering and landscape architecture firm at Edrager, we do, we do park work all the time, and we do these grant applications all the time, and I just say that to mention that we're, we're currently working with the township in Oakland County, they have, they've actually received. They have, they've actually received three DNR grants back to back to back. So it's not, you know, it's not unheard of. It's, again, it's based upon the merit of the project and the skill of the writer in conveying the importance of the project.
And the managing funds.
And the managing funds, that always helps too.
So in overall scheme of things, how do you view this project relative to something we've done?
It, it is, uh, it's a unique opportunity in that it's the township's first application. It would be the township's first park. It provides some opportunities that aren't necessarily available, that are at least free of charge. And some of our surrounding parks, we have metro parks, we have, you know, we have other mans, but they have mission fees. So some of the opportunities that we would have here of, of walking paths, natural areas, the, some of the children play areas, which are scheduled to be phased to. But some of those opportunities would be, would be unique to, to this park and for the township residents.
We have one in the north and then one in the south, there's nothing in the middle. So if you go, you have, the people in the middle aren't having access.
So what comes after, do we roll the dice and go for twenty-eight or do we do more planning and wait for twenty-nine?
From, as a committee, we will fulfill whatever the board's desires are. Obviously, we serve, it's your pleasure. I will say that in a grant writing effort, it's always good to go into that with confidence in terms of budget and project scope and what we're, basically what we're promising to the DNR. So if we're able to, to work through some of that in the, you know, in the next couple of months, I, you know, I think we can put together a really strong grant application that we're all confident about.
For...
But if there will not be, if we don't feel there is any clarity in that, we might be better waiting until the next year.
All right, well, that's right. So when do you need to have budget guidance, what budget guidance file for the April twenty-sixth of November?
Probably within the next couple of months. We could think about it and bring it back in October, right? Should be okay, or we're getting, it's...
I, I think...
We'll hopefully definitely shut down by then.
We don't need a little more involved.
I, I agree with Brian. The last statement he made about, you know, if, if you feel like, if, to be more confident moving in, if you feel like you need decision to figure out whether you want to break this down to three phases so that, you know, you, you break it down to a little bit digestible chunks or, or make those calls after. But you probably all should also look at other decisions you need to make in the next couple of months and prioritize how much time you can, you will be able to spend on this.
Yeah, I can, I can go either way. Right now, I'm leaning towards waiting.
And Deena, I should, I've been doing all the talking, but I should allow my colleague here, the committee, to speak, who also has a, a great deal of grant writing experience.
Hi there.
Hello.
Hi.
Two of us on the committee, Margaret, Mooney, and I are brand new to the committee. And neither of us have a lot of history with the park, the property and all that. I say that to preface the comments I'm about to make. I think what collectively Webster Township needs to do, and specifically the Oldwood Trustees, is there the will and the interest in having the park to begin with? So we have, we have some evidence to support that there is interest in developing this park, but it's from a fairly small sample of people. And as was mentioned earlier, we have nearly six thousand voters here. And truly a handful of people have weighed in on this. And so if you all feel that the data that we've collected so far merits moving forward with this, we're ready to start. But the first decision really needs to be made. Do we want to pursue this if we're not sure right now? I'd say wait for the following year. So we're uncertain.
We could send up, can you guys work on like a survey? See if we get any, I mean, I could send it out on email and everything, but...
Well, we, we had the survey that we...
I mean, we can...
And earlier, before summer. And we can try again.
Okay.
Um, and that's fine. And I think we have a date for a public hearing set up for next month.
Next month would be where we, where you guys would review your draft and then send it out for the thirty month, thirty day review. And then at the end of thirty day review is when we will hold a public hearing.
And at that point...
To be honest, I'm not quite hopeful coming on the show, unless we tie that with a private road meeting.
There we go.
Okay, so where I'm going with this, if, if we determine sort of collectively that this is a good project and we do want to pursue it, we're ready to start. Um, I know that Margaret and I, our preference would be to have more time. Uh, she and I both have experience with grant writing. And we've also identified some other sources of grant funding that could be used to supplement this, depending on, you know, who says, well, we shall be the only grantor. And if you're getting money from someone else, you shall not have money from us. Um, but there could be other opportunities outside the DNR and outside the state of Michigan to bring in additional funding. Um, one of the concerns that we all have for sure is the cost to maintain this thing. And I don't, I've had experience with estimating maintenance costs in other kinds of facilities. I have not done it for outdoor recreation facilities before. But I am happy to try to dive in and do some research to see if I can find some industry standard metrics, such as, you know, per acre, per square foot, um, per, I don't know, whatever the units are that are used to describe this type of park and see if I can find what industry standards look like. And then maybe we can put together a better estimate or get, well, get an estimate of what the maintenance costs would look like. I've, again, I have no experience with parks, but I have experience with other types of facilities. I imagine most metrics are out there.
You made the comment, so you're submitting in April of some year. When would you want to get started on the grant process? Twelve, six months before, eight months before?
Yes, six, six months before. I mean, I know that Brian has had good luck with this type of grant before. Neither Margaret nor I have done this specific grant before. But if there's some kind of narrative, if there's data, background references that are required to support it, it takes time to find that. And I think she and I would both prefer to not be rushed. And we'd like to have the full confidence that this is a project that we are interested in pursuing. So I'm, I'm being agnostic here on whether it's good or not.
But...
But if we do it, then let's do it, Brian. So, and, you know, I think, I can break out enormous amounts of stuff in a short period of time. I think we would prefer to be able to have a proper amount of time to put this together. So if we're trying to assemble something for April first, twenty twenty-six, we can do it. And if we are going to assemble something for April one of twenty twenty-seven, we can do that too.
So, so we, we, we did facilitate a previous survey. We'll be sending out three thousand, thirty-three hundred mailings, middle of November. We could do another survey, we could ask very focused questions. That's an opportunity or not.
Or, or just a few very succinct questions. So not a lot, just, you know...
Yeah, four or five questions that really cut to the chase.
Yeah.
That one got enormous response last time when we sent out...
With the tax...
With the tax bills. Like there was this big pile that Patricia has to go through. I also wanted to just take a quick moment to give you the...
But that was a long survey.
But still we got a lot of responses. Uh, but I wanted to, before I forget, want to give a shout out to the Thompson Rec Committee because I don't usually work with them often, but a couple of meetings I've attended, you've got a great, you know, talent in the committee right there between Brian, Deena, Margaret and Patricia. They come with abundant knowledge and experience, very specific to Thompson Rec and Jeff and Jeff, with their enthusiasm, of course.
But all these states seem like we're cutting into our four, one, twenty-six middle term.
I will say, the, we had the most recent survey and then we had the previous survey that, that graciously sent out with the tax bill. The sample size was much, much larger in that first survey. The, the thing that gives me a little bit of comfort is that the responses that we received in the latest survey align very, very closely with the responses from the first survey. And even some of the, even some of the open-ended comments were very, very similar as well. So it gives me, like I said, that gives me some comfort that while the latest sample size is small, it's still in alignment with the larger sample we had earlier. I just want to clarify, when you say small sample size, you're talking about thirty-three, right? Yes. Yeah, that, that was... Small is a very generous word to use. Yeah.
Okay. All right, so, because, and, so, just twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven. So, Frank.
Right now, I love the idea of you doing it. Thanks for all of your work. I want to make sure we put you in a position to be successful. Right now, there's a couple big unknowns for us here, which are budget related. And the way we make our budget decisions, you know, months click by. I'm worried we're going to get to December and there's still going to be the same questions. And you're four months out. So with all that, I could talk ten to twenty, but I think we wait to the next cycle.
Okay. Jeff, Nick?
I think we wait.
I agree. Okay, I do too. Okay.
I think it would be beneficial to get additional feedback, which may reinforce what we know, but that would be very beneficial. I, I think, agree with others that maybe we, as a result, just continue on our process here. But I would also suggest, I don't know how much the questions are, but the language from one year to the next on these applications changes, but, you know, we could begin to look at that and start developing the content now. With, I mean, so there'll be some similarities and base data that we'll need. And so we could get a head start, if you will, on the drafting narrative.
Yeah, like, for example, we, we have our budget meeting once March. So all these questions on budget, we're hoping they're going to have, be more formal on that as to where some of these bigger ticket items go in the oncoming years. I mean, so I would think by like January, if we have this updated along with the maintenance cost question and any of the softer costs, to make sure we understood those, along with this GAN chart or the big scheduling items, I think we could give guidance possibly beginning of next year on how to get started. And you have, at that point, you know, several months, almost, you have twelve months almost.
Yeah, ample time.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, you never have to wait till the last minute to turn it in.
Okay, so I guess you guys have your answer.
Thank you for all your hard work. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the pitch. Um, okay, Jeff had that extra break, and I know I'm way late on it, but then Danny had to get up. So you have like five minutes.
Please.
Five minutes.
Maybe for the next... I'm not doing it to be... Everything else is special. Yeah. I've got two here. Not one, I mean, not just do the two names. So, and that's it, I can talk to the street. Have you invited like Jim?
Jim? We've got our Jim.
Stretch out.
Do you look at your book or like the window, the top window?
That's why I, that's why I suggested...
Starting squares?
We go straight with squares and we do the ends and leave it and leave those arches out. They're very pricey. Very pricey.
I'm not sure how to work for a mill.
That's coffee, doesn't it? Yeah, coffee. I don't think I can see it. No, I know it was a joke.
Did you notice it was White? Mike?
I know.
Mike, not Mike, Michael. What's your building? Michael.
Well, Lawrence.
Lawrence. Michael Lawrence? Michael Lawrence?
Did you ever crush it about that? Do you need to put like a white on there or white is written on? It's just like... Okay. All right, as long as you...
Scratch your name and then print your name.
Okay. How many did I throw in yet?
That's a small one.
Three.
We've got three television channels. They're all excellent, Jonathan's office.
So two, like, so one over there...
All that size?
Ray and I are something...
What? No, 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 so the one over there is actually bigger. So these are thousands of them. There's two eighty-fives. And then there's that small fifty-five one that goes at four year and then... Two eighty-three here. Well, never, we don't necessarily do that all the time, but yes, whatever, whatever works.
Well, do the ones that most... One of the senior center that's on the cart is an eighty-five. And it fits the standard for...
See, and that's why I come to Bill about that. So I have, there's a lot of... Yeah, me too. So in there are in the back, like...
Huge, they're huge.
All right, okay. What do you presume? All right, um...
I mentioned if we may, I want to adjourn to somebody with a second.
I can't, I need one thing, I need two things, you guys. But...
All right, let's go.
Okay, so, next thing is, sorry, the next thing is Washington County Water Resources Proposal. Join or don't join this group?
How much does it cost, do we know? Is it a cost? I, I glanced at it, it's...
What's the commitments here?
Do you know them?
Do I know?
You know this organization?
Yeah, I don't know this one particularly, this program.
We're going to see a cost.
Yeah, I, I know them. I've spent a bunch of time with your, their active, their...
Okay. Yeah, I don't know anything about this, so... Yeah, I don't know anything about this, so.
This was a natural.
It's in the package. Oh, because the Natural Features Committee would like us to say yes or no to joining this group.
And it's not, there.
I haven't seen it.
Any dollar?
What page are you on?
One eighty-nine.
Natural features.
Just the one page.
So they're asking us to join the Partnership Environmental Excellence Community Partnership for Clean Streams Program?
Yes.
And we have to apply to the county water resource commission in an application?
Apparently, I, this is all I got from them.
Also, link, the link in the electronic package is active. It takes you to a county website page, it looks like.
Ask for a credit card.
Does it have somebody's contact? Apply here.
Oh, I bet. All right, they probably would come after approve us after seeing whether we have policies that protect clean water.
They won't show me the cost.
I think this is a good idea, but I think at a minimum, we need to know.
Okay.
Spend any money.
All right, let us postpone this if that's okay with everyone, or that's the motion, but, and then I can get Natural Features to give us a little more.
Or it is the price, or maybe it's.
Yeah, yeah.
What are we creating?
Okay, can I get a motion to postpone?
I, I moved the postpone.
Okay. I'll be now second. Discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Okay. So the private road ordinance update, so I'm not sure what we were initially going to do with this, but given the time, I think, so my question was going to be if we're going to look at like one to three, you know, sections one to three, I'm not sure how that meshes, you know, I saw the changes that you guys worked on, but now I'm not sure how that fits with the four and five ones. So I guess what I would like just tonight is can we figure out whether we want another special road meeting or whether we want to just go for it in October or do the public meeting, hearing, because now we have at least what we want and true, we'll have enough time, right, to give us the team to do. And if we have to, we'll have to do the moratorium, but, or we know extended, so I don't know about that.
I'll check on the moratorium, but I would think you should all probably look at all the articles once before you open it up for public.
Okay.
I'd like to see them all together.
Yeah, yeah, but that's what I mean. So did you, I guess that was my thing, did you want a special meeting or you want to do a natural?
I'm, I mean, we have residents that have been helped hostage by this.
Yeah.
I'm open to a special meeting. Yeah, so our meeting's when, it's the twenty-first, right?
The twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Is our special meeting.
Right, we, in October, though, we're all the way out to what, the twenty-first is the third Tuesday. Yeah, so I'm, I'm on travel next week, but I'm quite open on what.
Right, I don't want to do the specialty for this in September, mostly because I, I'm damn up Shreeva. I'm trying to get all the changes.
The two weeks before is the week of the October sixth, so there's Tuesday the seventh, that option.
That's probably Tuesday first to turn around the draft for your review.
All right. Oh, so, okay, so now we know we.
Okay, now we wait till the twenty-first.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's on October twenty-first.
Oh, maybe we can, and we don't, we don't have to do the voluntary part, we can go through.
You okay, Shree?
I think should be fine if that's the day that works for all. I just have planning conference from twenty-second to twenty-fourth in Columbusville.
That's our normal meetings, the twenty-first of October.
Can we do twenty? Because Mike will be downing the night of twenty-first.
We can't have two board meetings two days in a row.
Two zero?
Twenty-one is our board meeting.
Oh, what, what date were you thinking for the special meeting?
Oh, well.
We're talking about doing it on twenty-one.
The regular meeting?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Okay, yeah, that's fine. I'll, I'll, I'll book accordingly.
Okay. All right, so sounds like we're good with that. All right?
You don't need a motion.
No, no. Okay.
Can you have that first on the agenda?
Yes.
We'll have it main on the agenda.
It'll be the agenda.
Okay, so fire protection, interlocal agreement, so this one is.
It's not in the package.
Oh, no, no, because there's nothing about it. The only thing I need to know is I need a fourth person on this stupid negotiating team. Well, everyone else is going to have four. We can all have three, but we'll have five.
I think we should talk about the context of what's happening.
Okay.
We didn't take any action as a board. Did you hear the last board meeting?
Sorry?
Yeah, yeah, you were.
The strategy session?
And I was on that one, no, the one before that.
No, that, I was previously out of town.
So we, on our agenda for that night, we had to talk about this interlocal committee. And Karen asked for us to postpone it because Lonnie was not there. And she felt that Lonnie wanted this subcommittee to be directed by the DAFD board. Meanwhile, Mayor Keough continues to want to have his separate meeting, which he has now indicated to Mike that that meeting would be attended by four representatives from each municipality.
So he's acting outside?
Outside, yeah, independently.
So, yeah, so this idea, because I talked to him a little bit, or actually I talked to their.
You talked to the city manager.
There, the idea is that it's not, because it's the interlocal agreement discussion, it's not a fire board thing. I personally don't agree with that. But I'd like to hear what you guys want before.
Municipalities need to agree to.
Right.
A change in the interlocal.
We do.
So you, you can argue this or look at it both ways.
Right.
So he's looking at, well, given that it's composed of the municipalities, therefore the municipality should be making those decisions. The other way to look at it is, well, if there's a consensus amongst the board, the DAFD members on board, then they could make a recommendation to their respective entity, which, you know, may facilitate a smoother process. I don't know if it's.
Hold on, so I, okay, so shoot, I mean, obviously Mayor Keough is trying to pressure us, but the other thing is, so I talked to John Kingsley a little because we were, he was in when we were opening the biz and, and he's obviously going to be on our, you know, negotiating team. And he was wondering like whether we actually wind up better off because he was anticipating, his anticipation would be that if we went to this funding model, different funding model, that the city is growing and they have more, you know, more taxable value, they're going to, and the texture is growing. So maybe we, I, I think I, I personally.